To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. I said I, we do have a couple of different meetings. We're going to do a Board of Finance meeting, an organization meeting, and then a regular meeting, but we're going to start with farther down in the agenda on the regular meeting and do a staff spotlight first.
Or even a presentation first.
A presentation, that's too bad.
So, I'd like to introduce Mr. Josh Moore, Athletic Director at Northfield Junior Secondary School, and he has a great celebration here to talk about.
Well, as you know, last spring, our softball team had kind of historic run after winning first ever school sectional, and softball ended up winning the entire state championship. So, in honor of that, and in appreciation for all that you do and your support for athletics, we got a state championship medal with a picture framed for you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, thank you for all your support, not only for that team, which was very, very special. You have won one of those very often, if ever, in some cases, for some schools or some programs. So, and again, we appreciate all your support for not only the softball team, but all the athletics and everything we try to do. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we'll jump into the staff spotlight. Now, we're doing a staff spotlight, and so this is one of our favorite times of our board meetings, and so we actually have two things tonight, so that's what I really need. So, we have Tisha, who's going to actually talk a little bit about her spotlight. She's a parent to Alyssa Dieter, and so if we can come up here, we'll go ahead and share a little bit of information here, so.
No excuses.
No excuses. All right, well, would you like to go ahead and share what you wrote and what you nominated?
I did. I added a little bit today because Avery wasn't going to be here, because that was a big part of all of it.
So, how long a speech is this, Matt?
It's not very long. I can talk really fast.
Go ahead. Take your time, I'm just joking.
No, I nominated her because she really, truly, genuinely loves her students, her career, and the impact that she can make on the kids in her room is unbelievable. From what I've seen in the background on a daily basis, I see her put the time, effort, care, and concern into her students and their education. She's truly concerned, invested into our students' education and what goes on in their daily lives as well. It's very easy to see how she truly wants the best for them. The no, 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 yes, 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 that is awesome. And she truly invests herself in them and tries to help them in any way that she possibly can, past or present students. She has an incredible ability to make her students love to learn and love going to school each day. My personal experience is having students that struggle psychologically. It's been a struggle with her wanting to go to school years. We kind of got out of that last year, and she's really came out of her shell a lot this year, a lot. And the more it's clicking, the more confidence she continues to get, and she pushes that a lot. She actually loves going to school and loves learning new things now. She told me the other day that she wanted to be a teacher again, so that she can help kids get smart, too. I said, "You mean so you can help kids become smarter?" And she says, "That's what I said, Mommy." She's a very self-conscious child that does not like to draw attention to herself in any way, which unfortunately has also meant asking questions and trying to get help when she needs it. The thought of it terrifies her and has been a huge issue educationally, and yet somehow, through plain care, concern, attentiveness, creativeness, and pure love for her students, in the last couple of months, my daughter will ask her for help with things. She doesn't understand. For most people, they're like, "Yeah, she should have done that all along." For me, it's a big deal. I told you what she said her son's up for her one day, and Avery came home from school that day, and she says, "Mommy, Mrs. Dieter wasn't at school today." And I said, "Oh." She's like, "But her son was my teacher." And I'm like, "I thought that was super fun." She's like, "Well, it was okay." That itself told me all I needed to know about who is responsible for the changes that I see in my own child since the beginning of this school year, and I can't wait to see what this year has in store for her. I personally can't think and appreciate Mrs. Dieter enough for her time, concern, patience, and pure love that she gives my child. And from what I've seen, all of her students.
Why did not I?
I get a picture.
Thank you. Thank you very much for not naming her. And, Miss Dieter, congratulations. So, after, Mr. Moon, you want to share anything about Mrs. Dieter?
I echo everything, and you know, coaches, a lot of times, you know, talking about athletics, talking about like the intangibles, you know, things that aren't going to show up in the box score or on evaluation, whatever. And Mrs. Dieter, like she, she loves the whole child, loves the whole family, and that just really shines through every day. And I echo Tisha's sentiments, and you know, multiply that a hundred times fifteen, twenty, twenty-five to every student, every day. So, we love Mrs. Dieter.
All right, thank you. So, on behalf of MSU Walbers County and our sponsor, First Farmers Bank and Trust, we have something for you. I'd like for you to read the card, and you can look at the rest of it later. Can you read that out loud?
Oh, sure. Congratulations. Because you have dreamed big and worked hard, we figured you might like a soft place to rest. Thank you for doing what you do so well, staff spotlight.
And so, there's a blanket in there.
Yay.
There you go. All right, let's give it one more round. Thank you, and you're welcome to stay for all three meetings, or you can dismiss yourself.
Before, before she leaves, may I interrupt?
Yes.
We don't usually take a comment until later, but if it's all right with the board.
I don't order anyway.
Paula Kratz says, "We love her." Jody Boswell Trizzler says, "Mrs. Dieter is awesome. We've loved her every time we've had her." Shelley Sorrow says, "Wonderful," and Amy Schmidt says, "So deserving. Way to go, Mrs. Dieter." So, we don't get comments very often.
You are one popular lady.
For watching.
The viewers will go down here.
Thank you very much. I love my job.
So, we're going to go ahead and continue, since we did the presentations and the recognitions, we'll go ahead and do the student and staff recognitions, and we'll let Mr. Moon go ahead and do his first, and then I'll read the other ones, and then we can get to our first meeting.
In our winter sports season, and so I just wanted to recognize, we've got, as far as just elementary at the winter times, basketball. And so, boys are a couple of games away from being finished, and I wanted to thank coaches. Ryan Bassett is our fifth grade coach, and then Cole Wyatt does our sixth grade coaching. And so, really appreciate the time and the effort that those guys put in, working with the guys, you know, on the fundamentals, but then also just on, you know, lessons that are going to go way beyond basketball, teamwork, and just overcoming different challenges throughout the season. Basketball, girls' basketball is just getting started. They have like their first six a.m. practice tomorrow morning, so that'll be, that'll be fun. And our basketball coaches for girls are Sean Klein and Randy Pershing. So, looking forward to that season as well. I appreciate our coaches. And then the other one that I put on there, we're kind of mid-season right now as far as robotics goes, and last year, because of the COVID and different things that were in place, we kind of went a different route on competing in robotics. And with the robotics league, and we have, all of our events so far have been at Southwood Elementary, and I think we've got two more that we will host, but we've got nineteen area teams from local schools, and you know, it's just the same, same group every time. And through the first two evenings of competition, out of nineteen teams, MSD Elementaries hold eight of the top eleven spots. So, we are, we are being good hosts. I think the North Elementaries might be a little higher on standings at the moment, but I look for that to change over the next couple of weeks. So, I have nothing to do with scoring, so I can't fix it. But, yeah, and there again, you know, time and effort on behalf of coaches and parents to invest in our kids, and it's just a really neat opportunity. Appreciate Mr. Drake, you know, his efforts all along the way to really make robotics, whether it's been a team effort all the way. And so, we're proud of our kids, and we're having another fun robotics season.
So, you're welcome. I know you have to go somewhere sometime, but.
Sometime, yeah.
All right. I will just continue on then for Sharp Creek. From Mr. Martin, Sharp Creek would like to thank the North's bus drivers for the daily care and concern for our students. We appreciate their dedication in taking on this great responsibility. He also mentioned that congratulations to the sixth grade boys' basketball team as they defeated Oak Hill last evening. Also, good luck to our fifth grade boys' basketball team in their first home game this evening. Both these teams are pretty much effort and time into practices and representing us well in competition. Mr. Snyder at Northfield said, "Northfield would like to congratulate Eli Crow, Hannah Holmes, and Isaac Burkhardt for honors received at the Walbers County Basketball Tournament. Eli and Hannah made the all-county teams, and Isaac received the JV Boys Bill Rogie Sportsmanship Award." Also, from Mr. Snyder, "Northfield Junior Varsity, Varsity Girls' Basketball Team received exemplary behavior report from official Scott Geist at Columbia City Game on 12/22. Mr. Geist stated, 'Northfield's team and coaching staff showed great sportsmanship throughout the entire game. Our officiating team was appreciative of this great team.'" Also, from Northfield, "Would like to recognize and congratulate Malachi Higgins, Carson Pratt, and Reese Rosine for becoming certified drone pilots through the drone program at Heartland Career Center. While school was out over Christmas break, these three were busy passing the FAA Part 107 to obtain the remote pilot license." Cool. And then, from Southwood, from Mr. McDaniel, "Southwood would like to congratulate the following athletes for making the all-tournament team for the Walbers County Tournament. Isaiah Sutton, Jason Apprecic, and Cole Weiner for the boys, and Ella Hopper, Elena Weiner, and Aleah Sweet for the girls' team. Southwood would like to congratulate Aleah Sweet, Cole Warner for being named Walbers County Tournament MVPs. Way to go. Nice." I'm kind of reading this symbol. That went backwards, but that's how we started, so you guys are good at backwards. Southwood Athletics received exemplary behavior report from the IHSAA just in fall. Basketball official wrote the following about the game on 12:30. Both teams exhibit great sportsmanship to each other and during officials during this game. It's nice to, as an official, to work for coaches to coach their team and ask questions in a professional manner during a contest. It's also nice to officiate for players that show respect for the officials in the game itself. Both of these teams are the face of sportsmanship in my eyes." And obviously, congratulations to, from Mr. McDaniel, to our varsity boys and varsity girls' teams for winning their championship games at this year's Walbers County Holiday Tournament. This marks the first year that our girls have won the championship game. Way to go. Nice. And as always, those are great to hear. That's all I have for this time.
All right. So, at this point, we're going to hop back into the regular scheduled agenda. So, we're going to start out with the Board of Finance meeting, but I'm going to call that to order. And the first thing that we'll do is we'll declare that the entire Board of Education will constitute the Board of Finance for MSD. First item of business for that then is to elect the Board of Finance President. Any other nominations? Anyway, nomination, we have a second to elect me as the Board of Finance. All members say aye.
Aye.
Next item is to elect a secretary for the Board of Finance.
I nominate Kevin Boone.
Any other nominations? Motion and a second to nominate Kevin as the Secretary of the Board of Finance. All members say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have a report on investments and renew the investment policy, and that will be from Dr. Kevin.
Yeah, so I gave you a memo that really, we don't really have any investments, per se, and we don't really have an investment policy, something that I think I've mentioned before that I kind of like to look into establishing. So, really, the only investments we get are the interest earned from the money that's in our account, and that just kind of shows you what we earn in interest for the 2021 calendar year, $25,000.75, which actually is probably pretty good as far as interest rates are concerned. In August of 2020, kind of right after the summer of COVID, I reached out to our bank and to see if we could establish some type of funding for, so that interest rate can always go higher than that, but it will never go lower than that. And so, in 2020, the funding for was at .2%, and the new rate for 21, 22 is .15%. I think interest rates are below .05 right now even, and so that would typically mean you get about $600 a month in interest, whereas right now, we're getting about $2,000 a month per interest just because of the funding for rate that we established with the bank. And again, if interest goes up higher than that, then obviously we get that rate, but at least we have a four established so that we don't hopefully get into those years like 2014, 2015, 2016, where we didn't really earn very much interest, if any at all. So, that's, that's a positive, even though interest rates are, interest is still low, but at least we have a little bit of a caveat there. So, just wanted to share that with you. That's part of the requirement by Indiana law to share any type of interest or investment monies earned for the calendar year. Moving on then, as part of our other requirement through Indiana law, is there has to be a presentation of our finances, using the DOAB fiscal indicators that were established a few years ago. And so, I'm just going to kind of go over this. If you have questions, feel free to ask, but I'll tie in to kind of how we ended this year financially and the outlook moving forward with some of the things that we've already done in our budget hearings. So, this is the 2022 finance meeting. Wanted to establish what our actual expenditures were, so that shows you in our, our main funds, I'm just kind of relating this back to the things that we do for the DLGF, but in our main funds, you can see in the column there that 2021, those were our actual expenditures. The next column shows our budget appropriations as far as what we submitted from our budget hearing. The third column there represents what we got back from the DLGF in our 1782 notice of what our actual appropriations are. Remember, our appropriations just give us the ability to spend money. It doesn't necessarily mean we have the money or we don't have the money. It's just what we're allowed to spend. And then, the fourth column there represents what was on our 1782 notice as far as our tax levy rates were concerned, showed what our final assessed valuation was and what our final tax rate will be for this calendar year. And then, I just left the, the last column there represents the tax cap impacts, which we estimated in based off what was submitted to us by our county auditors in anticipation of that would be money that we may not likely see in our tax levy. So, even though, for example, our operations levy is $4.4 million, we probably will not see $4.4 million because of the tax cap impact. So, this was the budget that we submitted from our budget hearing. The overall was $26 million, $927,120. The 1782 notice, after adjustments, was reduced a couple hundred thousand dollars. So, our overall budget will be $26 million, $794,000, and you can see the difference in how that adjusted an education operation that serves around the fund. This is what we submitted in our education fund as far as appropriations were concerned, 14.3. Our budget came back to us from the 1782 notice, exactly the same. So, we didn't have to reduce any appropriations there in our education fund budget. We don't have to click on that. You can go through there and see historical comparisons on tax rate and levies. I just kind of threw up some things here just to pay attention to. Our assessed valuation, we had the largest increase in our assessed valuation that we've had in like seven years. So, that was pretty good because we all know that the higher assessed valuation is, the lower our tax rate ends up being. And so, that obviously helped offset some of the impact on our taxes, just having that increase in assessed valuation. That's just a visual of that, and how that has looked over time. This is just a comparison. If you recall, a few years ago, we had asked Policy Analytics to kind of run a forecast into what our assessed valuation may look like over the next few years. And there, it was just kind of really a bad time, just because when we did this, that's about right when COVID started, so there was a lot of assumptions being made and not being made and so forth. And so, it looks like based off of their projection, you know, we weren't supposed to see that kind of number until 2030, and obviously, we hit that number sooner, which is good. This is a comparison of our certified tax rates over time. It's too recent for 2022 to be in the system that I used to gather this. So, I used the black line to kind of show what our new tax rate is for 2022. So, you can see that this year's tax rate will be 83 cents. Shows you how much of that is related to debt service, how much of that is related to operations. So, over these last, I think that's 11 years, we show an 81 cent tax rate average, and you can see how that's fluctuated since 2012 up to this point now. How does that relate to statewide comparisons? You can see that, I don't really have an update on those as far as 2021 is concerned. So, the last I had is 2019. I assume some of those rates have increased to some degree, but anyway, the median statewide is about a dollar when we're looking at comparison from tax rates. So, we would fall in that 25 percentile. Same comparison here, that just kind of breaks it down by the numbers as far as how many fall into those quartiles. And again, we would fall into that 80 cent quartile towards the front. I always liked listening to Larry DeBoer. He's a retired professor now from Purdue, and he always gives good presentations about the economy and what the outlook and forecast might be. But anyway, this is more related to the interest rate components as far as borrowing money is concerned, lowest that it's been in seven years. And so, we're in a good position there. I think when we borrowed money last summer, we borrowed $2 million, and it was less than, it was half a percent, I think, was our interest at that point in time. So, pretty good interest rates happening with that. This is nothing new. We've seen this before as far as our comparisons with our border schools in tax rates. You can see where we fall in relation to our surrounding areas. You can also see how much money on that second graph, how much levy is generated based off of that tax rate. So, like, for example, Huntington has, is that a dollar? What is that, Mike? I can't see that.
What are you looking on the, on the right side?
On the left side.
1.036.
Yeah, 1.036.
So, that's showing that their tax rate's a dollar three, and the money that they generate from that, because they have such a high assessed valuation, is over $16 million. That's what their levy generates. And so, for us, last year, and I don't have new ones for, like I said, 2022 yet, because not all of that is gathered in to the system, but for us, our tax rate last year was 87 cents, and so for us, it generated just over $6 million in tax rate, or in levy dollars. So, that's just kind of a comparison of how much money is generated per entity based off of the tax rate. So, like Walbash City, for example, their tax rate was a $1.65, and they only, they generated less than $4 million in their tax levy from that tax rate. Go down to the next slide. Our operation fund, this is what, again, we submitted to the DLGF in our budget hearing, $8.9 million. That came back in the 1782 notice on the next slide as the same, so we didn't have to reduce any appropriations in there. Just made our adjustments based off of new information. You realize that when we submit these budgets, usually I've completed those in August, so there's new information that comes out in September, October, November, December, and that makes some adjustments on what our final distributions may be with that. So, last here, we'll look at our fiscal indicators, which is put out by the DOAB, which is the Distress Units Appeal Board, which is a state entity that puts out these indicators to try to show constituents and boards the financial possible impacts that schools may see so that they can identify if a unit has become distressed financially and that they can plan accordingly. Now, this information is always a year in the rears, so this information will represent the end of December 2020. Even though we just completed 2021, these indicators are a year in the lab, so these indicators will reflect what hap, where we're So these indicators will reflect what hap, what, where we're at or what the financial status is as of December of 2020. Okay? So this, this first slide shows what our assessed valuation was and the estimated population. People can go to the website here, they can click on some of these buttons and get some more detailed information if they choose to. But one of the indicators that they look at is ADM, because ADM is where we generate our state dollars based off the number of students that we have. So a potential indicator could be that if they, if the school district is losing enrollment, then they would be losing state dollars, which could put a distress on the school. Okay? So anyway, this shows what our average daily membership has looked like since the 2012, 2013 school year. And it gives you a breakdown of what the fall count was and what the spring counts were during those years. I've given that to you guys before in presentations. This is just something similar that we've used. That does show that we do have a decline in trend when it comes to ADM and all that. The other thing that they look at are fund balances. And so they want to see whether or not if there are distresses, if you have a balance that may be able to support that distress over a period of time. And so you can see based off of all the different types of funds, what those fund balances were over a period of time. So like, for example, you can see that brown line, which is in the red, okay, which was that self-insurance fund that we had been dealing with over a number of years. And we know now that line has disappeared because we did that at the, at the beginning of 2021. So obviously it would not be reflected based off the end of 2020. But it kind of, it shows you those changes in fund balances for some of those funds over that period of time, which we can see that many of those have improved up to the point where we're at, where we're showing here at the end of 2020. I've shown you this before, too. This is kind of a similar type of thing, just looking at those fund balances, specifically the education and operation fund balances, which is that yellow line. This shows a comparison. This indicator reflects the amount of revenue that the school corporation receives and the amount of expenditures that they pay out on a yearly basis. And then that will represent any type of deficit or surplus throughout those years. This is related to all funds, okay? So not just, this is not a visual picture of just education fund. You can go on the website and you can click on that little dropdown menu and you can identify the different funds if you choose to, to see that. But this is just a representation of all funds. And you can see that our surpluses have arisen out of all funds because our expenditures are less than our revenue, right? So we're gaining more money than we're spending. This is a breakdown of just the education fund. This is my own graph that I, I use, and I use this to compare the basic grant to the amount of revenue that we receive in our education fund along lines of our ADM count. So what I like to see is, I like to see that our basic grant at least supports our expenditures because that is the state dollars that we're getting per ADM. We also have, we also get other revenue streams for other things. But I feel like as long as our basic grant is meeting our expenditure line, then we're setting ourselves up in pretty good positions because the extra revenue then is, I don't want to say it's gravy, but it's helpful, right? So you keep a good balance that way. This other indicator represents fund balances as a percent of expenditures. And again, this represents all funds. And if you want to break it down by individual funds, you can go to that dropdown menu and do that. But this represents all fund balances as a, as a percent of expenditures, which shows that our fund balances are sitting at 70% of our expenditures, which is a pretty strong number for the most part. This is revenue types. So this just lays out the amount of revenue that we earned or received over those years to see if there's any increases or decreases in any of those revenue streams. This other indicator, they like to look at if school corporations are relying on any type of referendums. We have not pursued any type of referendum. So that's why you see a zero line item there. So those are the indicators that the DUAB puts out. Again, that's all public knowledge. You can go on, you can look at any school district and you can look at all those different indicators to see any of those types of things. So based on that report, we're supposed to give you an idea of the strengths and weaknesses of the school corporation when it comes to those indicators. I believe we shared this before in the past, and this is just kind of updated based off of those indicators. But we feel like some of the strengths of our district is our assessed valuation, which we saw a huge improvement with that for the 2020 year. We also feel like the monies that we borrow, we have been good stewards of those dollars to not get ourselves carried away with the amount that we're borrowing and the length that we're borrowing for those terms. With that being said, you know, with the debt that we have incurred now, we only have two remaining debt obligations. And those, one will expire at the end of 2022 and the other will expire at the end of 2023. We feel like our cash balances are a strength and those are areas that we really improved. One of our goals is the rainy day fund, improving that cash balance, which I'll talk about here in a little bit. So we feel like that is another strength. Our circuit breakers have increased over a period of time. I think when I first started here, our circuit break losses were like $30,000. Now we're in the six figures. So anticipated circuit breaker loss is $200,000. So it is a little bit concerning to some degree, but we've been able, we will hopefully be able to continue to keep that off a little bit just because of our fund balances. And then our student transfers from out of district have improved over the last few years. Why that's important is because that is ADM dollars then, that has helped improve our revenue stream when it comes to ADM is getting those students out of district to enroll with our schools. So I feel like those are some of our strengths financially that have helped us over this period of time. Some of our weaknesses or some of the things that could impact our finances is just enrollment, our capacity efficiencies in our buildings, double services, any type of programming that we may be doubling. Some of the facility updates that are needed in our buildings due to the age of the buildings or just due to some of the updates that need, are needed. A lack of a long-range facility plan, like we've been able to do things on a capital project and we usually plan out for three years, but we don't really have anything from a long-term need, which then can impact how we want to service out a debt plan for the future. So those are some areas that I would consider as weaknesses, but I also consider those as opportunities if you go to the next slide. So we have the opportunity then to develop some of those types of plans with the low tax rate that we have in comparison. I feel like that's a way that we can manage a stronger tax rate in developing a longer range plan. We can look at expanding our out-of-district transfers and try to find ways to improve on those as far as student counts, ADMs are concerned. Threats to the district. Enrollment can be a threat. State legislation can be a threat as far as maybe the requirements that they put on us, the unfunded mandates that they put on us, the changes in how they fund ADM dollars could be a threat. The changes in our facilities that we're going to need upgrades down the road, some resistance to those could be potential threats. TIFs, which are growing areas, could be potential threats. Additional required programming that the IDOE or state legislation requires for us. Obviously, more programming costs additional dollars and sometimes those programmings are required because of graduation pathways or whatever needs to be enforced there. And then just those unexpected costs that you just don't always know are going to happen, that happen. Growing costs with things such as COVID-19, growing costs with fuel prices, natural gas prices, utility prices. You know, our, for example, our property insurance went up $35,000 this year. And that's not necessarily a cost due to anything that's our fault. It's just a, a cost that has occurred across the nation because of, so those can always be threats, some of the unknown factors. So as, as far as financial go, goals are concerned, one of our goals is that we want to maintain an education fund balance that is equivalent or better than three months of expenses throughout a year. And we want to be able to manage that while increasing pay benefits and programming needs throughout the corporation. So this is a comparison of what that looks like over the last two years. So in 2020, our monthly average was 1.1 million. So in three months, that would be a 3.6 million fund balance that we would look to have. Well, at the end of 2020, we were at $6 million. So we're exceeding that expectation. 2021, monthly average was 1.2, which could be a three-point month, average of 3.6. So at the end of 2021, we actually finished with a 7.3 million fund balance in our education fund. Number two is a similar goal, but in our operations fund. So in 2021, our monthly average was about $500,000 of expenses. So three-month average would put you at about 1.5. And our current at the end of 2020 was $4 million. That one fluctuates a lot differently because we only get money at, at the mid-year in June and at the end of December because that's when tax monies come in. So we have a lot of expenses that come before we get our main revenue in the middle and end of the years. And then 2021, we spent a little bit less. And I, I would say that's probably due to the fact that we weren't having to spend money into our self-insurance fund for 2021, which then will free up other things that we can do from a capital standpoint. And then the last goal here is, we just want, we talked a little bit about this throughout the year last year, is looking at increasing our rainy day fund to 10% of our education operation fund balance. So our fund budget for 2021, for example, was $21 million. 10% of that was $2 million or $2.1 million. And at the end of 2020, our rainy day fund balance was $1.6 million. So in 2022, our fund budget is $23 million. So 10% of that would be 2.3. Our current rainy day fund budget is $1.4 million. So our goal would be get that higher, it may not get to $2.3 million, but I think if we can keep adding to that every year a little bit here and there, eventually we can get that up to that 10%. So it may take a few years to do that. That concludes the financial meeting information.
Good. Any questions for? If not, we're going to adjourn the board of finance meeting and hop right into the reorganization meeting. So we're going to call that the board. We don't have, oh, we do have a slight revision to begin to hear on as far as board scholarship. Board of office, we don't have any board members or reelected board members this particular year, so just jump right into the new business. We need to first look at electing a president for the board of education.
I can nominate Todd Dizzy.
Any other nominations? Motion second to nominate me again as the president for the board, all in favor, say aye. Election of a vice president.
I'd like to nominate Kevin.
Any other nominations? Motion in second to approve, to elect Kevin as the vice president of the board, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Kevin?
Congratulations.
Election of secretary. Motion second to nominate Matt as our secretary, all in favor, say aye. Legislative liaison delegate to the ISBA annual convention.
You okay with that, huh?
Yeah. I nominate Todd then. Motion in second to nominate me to be the legislative liaison to the convention this year, all in favor, say aye. Representative to the Hartland Career Center Board of Managers.
I'd like Matt.
Me, too.
Motion in second to appoint Matt our representative to the Hartland Career Center Board, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Appointment of a corporation attorney and established retainer of $175 per hour.
I would like to recommend, Mr. President, we approve the law office of Downs, Tanny and Tremio P.C. as attorneys at the rate of $175 per hour.
So we have a motion in second to, to continue on with Downs, Tremio, and who else?
Tandy.
Tandy, that's, I forgot, I'm sorry, Jordan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Appointment of corporation treasurer and deputy treasurer with the current bond set at $200,000, elementary bookkeepers with the current bond set at $10,000, and high school bookkeepers, $20,000.
And I'd like to recommend the appointment of Dr. Chris Kuhn as corporation treasurer and also recommend Board Bear as deputy treasurer with the current bonds that you listed.
So move to the recommendation. Motion in second to approve the treasurer and deputy treasurer, all in favor, say aye. Establish the board member salary.
So the current salary of board members is $2,000. Hartland Career Center representative receiving additional $25 per meeting, not to exceed 12 meetings. The maximum salary cannot exceed $2,000. That's my recommendation.
Okay.
No, I need a motion first, so I don't want to give a motion. I didn't hear a motion. Okay. Motion in second to establish the board member salary at $2,000, all in favor, say aye. Establish mileage rate reimbursement.
I recommend the mileage rate for all school employees be the same as the amount in the current teacher master contract, which is 44 cents per mile.
So.
A motion, did I have a second? Motion in second to establish the mileage reimbursement rate to be 44 cents, all in favor, say aye. Board scholarship.
Yes, the tradition has started in 1994. Each board member contributed $200 annually toward a $2, $500 scholarships, one each for Northwood and Southwood. The board selects the recipients from the applications submitted each spring, and we do appreciate the board doing that if you so move to elect to do this again this year. do appreciate the board doing that if you so move to elect to do this again this year.
Motion second to approve again the board scholarship of $500 for each school, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Appointment of a local education agency officer.
So I recommend that the board appoint the superintendent of M S E of Walbers County as a local education officer for the interim year with authority to file applications for federal funds on behalf of the school corporation.
So move, second.
Motion in second to appoint Mr. Key Favor to be the local education agency officer, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say, we'll adjourn our reorganization meeting.
Well, we have, yeah, yeah, just another page, sorry.
Was there another page?
Yeah.
I didn't see the other page.
You almost got it. Close. Two more. Well, maybe not. Here you go. Here.
On the back.
Select newspapers for legal advertisement. Okay, by law, we're required to place legal advertisements in our county newspaper. I recommend that you officially approve the Walbers County.
So.
Motion in second to select Walbers Plain Dealer to be our official legal advertisement newspaper, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approve continued participation in W M A P and Hartland Career Center.
Yes, and I also recommend that we add a continued participation in both of those entities.
So.
Sorry. Motion in second to continue participation in W M A P and Hartland Career Center, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Other, but I don't know what other is. You have that one, you need that one. Okay. Okay, so that does adjourn our reorganization meeting, and we will jump right into the regular scheduled meeting. We'll skip the pledge allegiance since we already did that at six. Regular board meetings are January 25th, February 8th, and February 22nd at our six o'clock time here at this building. We did the staff spotlight and the school recognitions, but we'll go with the public recognition. We have the recommendation to approve a $1,000 donation from the Early Learning Indiana Quality Program Study for Metro North, Little North Preschool. I'm going to do all these donations at the same time, that's why I leave you guys. Recommendation to approve a $200 donation from Manchester Alive for Northfield FFA. Recommendation to approve a 5,000 anonymous donation for Southwood Softball. And a recommendation to approve a $50 donation from the Little Girl Century Club to purchase books for the Metro North Library. $250 in generous donations. I think that's really great. I move that we approve these donations.
Yes.
Motion in second to approve the donations, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And so we did the school recognition, staff spotlight. I will stop again for just a minute or so for, again, I am holding public comment. See if anybody's still watching after Mrs. Dieter left.
We did have Carol Early chimed in and said about, so that she's an angel and so deserving. And Sherry Ridgeway wanted to thank Dr. Kuhn for the explanations and transparency on our finances.
All right. Moving on to the consent agenda items, approval of the minutes from our last meeting, which was about a year ago now, December 14th of 2021, approval of those minutes.
We approve the minutes.
Clear.
Motion in second to approve the minutes from our last board meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Claims.
Biggest claims you're going to see are probably the ones from the debt service payments.
There's no questions, Todd, I'm going to approve claims.
Second.
Motion in second to approve claims, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Payroll. We have a couple payrolls.
Yeah. The December 15th one is the one that will look not typical, just because that's when we pay out the teacher appreciation grant dollars that we got through the state out to our teachers. So you can see $75,565 of that was through the teacher appreciation grant that the state gives out to teachers that are highly qualified and what's the other?
Highly effective. Highly effective.
And then the one at the end of the year would represent more of the typical payroll.
I'm going to payroll. Second. Motion in second to approve payroll, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Financial summary, you kind of gave us one at the beginning, but.
I did, and I don't need to go through all this stuff necessarily. So the first one is just the cash balance report at the end of December, which would be also the end of 2021, and where those fund balances ended up at the end of the And if you go ahead, then, then there's the representation of the education fund, cash flow, and you have what it looks like at the end of 2021, as well as the end of 2020, as well as some other graphs that I did last year, but this is just to kind of show you some things that I look at from a month-to-month basis. I don't usually present on all of those month-to-month. But since it's the end of the year, I like to give that information so you can see it. And really, it's just more of a comparison of previous years and a comparison of what has happened over this past year. So some of it mirrors our cash balances, some of it mirrors the things that we do with our cash flow, but more in graph, graph format. So I don't need to go over in this stuff.
Pretty colors, too.
They are very pretty colors. But you can kind of see how we planned out our budget and where we ended up, comparison to our budget. You can also see some of those variances that might have occurred in our revenues and expenses throughout the year. But again, that's something that I look at on a monthly basis. I don't always give all that information out on the month because usually the cash flow sheets that I give you is, is, gives it all out right there and there for the most part. This, Mike went through the operations one as well, which is something that we look at. This is how our transfers ended up throughout the year. So we ended up transferring 12% of our revenue from the education fund to operation fund. Remember, the law is 15%. And you can see through that 12%, there was a deficit as far as what we could have put into our operations fund of $153,000. And to do that, that would have just meant if you go over to the next one, we would have had to transfer 12.9% of our budget. So we typically tried to stay between that 12 and 13%. And our operations fund obviously has been strong, and so I think the last year we had a surplus of monies that we put into our operations fund. So it really kind of almost balances out over the last two years with that. And then along those lines, I will anticipate increasing the amount of dollars we transfer into our education fund from our operations fund, a little bit to offset some of those costs, with the hopes that our revenue in our education fund still can keep us at that 12 to 13% right now. And if not, we'll just make those adjustments as we did. That's really, I think, did Mike, as far as the financial summary is concerned.
We'll move on to personnel. Under resignation, we have Elizabeth Lorenz, the slash H H teacher at W M A P. Employment, Mary Lowry, a cook at Northfield High School. Paige Hill, parent professional and professor through Southwood High School. Tony McKellum, a temp teacher at Metro North Elementary. We see that's going to start on approximately March 28th. Retired Vernon Mallett, head custodian at Sharp Creek Elementary, and that was effective today. Leave number 132 and 133, you see those dates, when those start and returning dates.
Before we vote, I'd like to just mention a couple things. First of all, Elizabeth Lorenz, obviously she has not been with us very long, but she's getting married and she's going to go to Indianapolis, so too much of a commute. So unfortunately, we will not have her after this school year. And then, of course, we just want to recognize Vernon Mallett for his 26 years of service with us. Probably would have worked a little bit longer, but some health issues with his wife, and so he's going to be a full-time health care provider for her and after she has her surgery. So we just really appreciate him and his positive attitude that he's been throughout the years. He's a very fun person to be around, and like I said, just a very positive person, which is always nice.
Yeah. Vernon, my kids all went through there.
Yeah.
They knew him as well as the teachers.
Yeah.
Just one of those guys that the kids like.
Exactly.
I'm going to approve the interim report.
Second.
Motion in second to approve the interim, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For Hartland Career Center report, Matt.
Nothing now, we'll have something next week that we have some positive movement out of the past.
All right. Superintendent for, Mr. Key Favor.
Yeah. I'm trying to find the button that says present. On the iPad is a little bit different than the, there it is. There we go. Sorry for the delay there. All right, each year in January, just like to go over some really, just to review basically the state of M S D of 2021. It's not the school year 2020, 2021, but that calendar of 2021. So just like to go over some of these, I may not read them all, but starting in January, of course, challenges continue, quarantines, resolutions, new CDC guidelines. That's going to be a theme. I put that down there every month because that has been a challenge for us. But also then, there's a lot of neat things that have happened, three-year-old preschool presentation approval that you approved in January, the continuation of looking at strategic plan number four, the work session, the SWOT analysis and the tour that you all took. Also, we had another Lilly Scholarship, Senior Emma Brainer won that. And then one thing that Dr. Kuhn has talked about, the self-insurance fund has a zero balance. So that obviously was something. When I went through this, I look at a lot of different things. I look at my board updates, I look at our board agendas, I look at things through the schools, and I could really spend probably a couple hours on all of the things in the schools, too. We're not going to do that, but we highlight some of those things that are above and beyond maybe what others people can do, because there's a lot of individual things students have done also. So in February, of course, the challenges continue, we had a work session, policy analytics. Of course, we had Tuck Hopkins, we had two new board members, of course. They have already been here a whole year already, so that's amazing how time flies. The rise transition for 2021, 2022, taking on those students in our own buildings. And then, of course, N H S wrestling individuals in semi-state, up to 50 students on A D M in February 2021. The girls' basketball team playing in the semi-state in Grant Dale also swam in state. So don't go with necessarily sectionals, but regionals, semi-states and states to see the successes of those. You can see that I also then changed this, the challenges to opportunities. There are challenges and opportunities, because we got additional funding through the CARES Act and the S R two at that time. The honors band and choir back was canceled in 2020. So that was that famous Friday that we don't want to ever relive. And then Northfield always went to New York, but of course they cannot go, but then they transitioned to go to Florida and probably really loved it there, too. So robotic teams participate in state finals, unfortunately virtually, but they still were in the state finals. The academic awards and recognitions that we didn't do the prior year, kindergarten roundup back at our schools. And what I mean by that, we typically did everything together, but with COVID, we decided to go back to the schools. And actually, that's a little more intimate, because then, of course, they can see in schools, the parents can be there, and it's a good, good situation. And then, of course, the Southwood Boys Basketball Team playing in semi-state. There are a lot of, a lot of things that happened last year with, with that also. Additional funding with S R, General Assembly will provide increases to education fund. That was actually a huge opportunity or a surprise for us, because at one time, we were going to be happy if they were just going to go status quo on the basic grant. And actually, it went up a lot more than what we thought. The senior class in Tennessee at Southwood. Here again, we had pandemic stipends and positions that were added, so that was an opportunity really because of COVID. And also the House Bill 1008 competitive grant that was awarded to the Y that actually helped our students for summer school and aftercare. And then, you know, we took home three of the top three winning places, Walbers County innovate within pitch competition. The D A O E recognized Sharp Creek and Northfield for being family-friendly. Brand-new website was launched. Northfield Southwood eighth grader went to Washington, D.C. Moment of silence for school board meeting for Sharp Creek teacher Chuck Baird. Northfield Southwood went to track regionals. The senior signs were delivered again this year, third-grade North students moving to Sharp Creek due to increased enrollment programming. And then, of course, the 2021 Geo Bond acquired. Again, it's sometimes hard to know how much to put on here, but those are really some highlights. And then in June, you can see another opportunity, we received a GEAR grant, summer school. I know Dr. Kuhn kind of pushed that out there with Mrs. Moore and some other people, some teachers with the Minds in Action, bringing that back, helping out, what was it called, many, many years ago?
Science of Motion.
Science of Motion. So Minds in Action. And of course, additional support for students, over 200 students because of summer school, because of the finances, we were able to service a lot more students. The Southwood Boys Baseball playing in the regional, Northfield Girls softball state final game, and Winston State, of course. And we all have these nice shadow boxes with the picture and the metal, which is really cool. And then the traditional graduation from the year before, that was very nice to have. Senator Zay introduced M S D W C to the CARE portal, which is going on right now, which helps our students and their parents. We participated in the La Grove Parade, and five Southwood High School students were selected to sing the 2021 Indiana High School All-State Honor Choir. What was really significant about that was there were five of them that actually auditioned, all of them were selected, and the state of Indiana All-State Choir actually reduced the number of students. So that was quite an accomplishment there. And then in July, we started out, you remember, we had a reentry plan. Of course, we were at the fair. And then Indiana Teacher of the Year program, Pam Campbell, was elementary winner, and Shelley Myers, the top 25 in the state for the secondary. So that was awesome. And then the fiber rewiring and ceiling tower replacement in Northfield and Southwood. It's completed. Again, we had a lot of different things that happened with the challenges and opportunities, supplement to the reentry plan. We had food shortages reported by vendors. I mean, we never did not go out and not have food, but they had to change their menus all the time because of that. And then the S R funds to hire two additional counselors and dean of students and substitute teachers at the elementary. M S D W C started slow, 2020 census was released, which was not necessarily good news of losing the residents here in Walbers County. September 2021, U S D A continues to offer free breakfast and lunch to all students. You can see that all secondary students participated in the Walbers River Defenders, Walbers River Wild Field Trip. And then, of course, we, we lost all of last year with the staff spotlight, and you can see how tonight it was very awesome to see that parent and all the things that she wrote about Mrs. Dieter and what we continue to do each month. The Terry Hall Body Safety Presentation resumed, Walk Into My Future event resumes, e-learning resumes. We had GEAR grant monies that we had P D, we brought in Dr. Adam Drummond, Connor's Day Parade, we participated in that, Roke Bryant Parade. And then, of course, the girls' golf playing in the. And then, of course, the girls' golf playing in regional. In October, we receive another grant through Longs Miami Area Program. We have not started to spend those dollars yet. We have a little bit more work to do with that, but our share is over $110,000. Teacher contract was approved with additional increases, the two-year contract, the Ag Expo can resume, that's the fourth grade. Lummy Track was dedicated at Northfield. Southwood Elementary sixth grade possible transition discussion was started. Josiah White's new name, starting a new recovery services program. MSD will educate all of those students. And when I say all of those students, they have two different programs. So, the longer program is the one that they will do, not the shorter thirty-day program. ADM increase in traditional buildings. MSDWC offered paid and also paid for the SAT for seniors. In-person parent-teacher conferences resumed, because before it was not. The Southwood Girls Live Ball playing in the regional, Northfield Boys and Girls ran a regional, and Southwood High School Boy ran a regional. It's good stuff. Of course, the challenges continue. Just in November, the Winter Street Bank Banner Contest, our teachers and students also excel in art. MSDWC took home eight of the fourteen grade-level winners and three of the three sponsor choice winners and one of the one Bob McCall Award winner. So, I do keep track of that when I go there and mark them all down, so that's how I know that one. MSDWC and the S and P rating moved up to an A-plus due to the very healthy financial status. And then finally, December, of course, challenges continue with COVID-19. Few residential districts were approved by MSDWC School Board via resolution. The TikTok challenge, I had to put that in there, created disruptions across the schools in the U.S. Obviously, some disruptions with us, too, and the roofing sections at Northfield and Southwood were completed. And again, I apologize if there's anything I missed, because I know I'm sure I did, there's a lot more things I could have done. But it's been a very good 2021 despite some of those challenges. And we're going to look forward to continuing with our strategic plan, which is listed up there, we'll read that. And then, of course, we provide strong product determined by our surveys and results. Our goal is to strengthen our MSDWC options amidst a changing environment and sustain it for many years to come. And finally, 2022, here we come. We're already in the eleventh day. So, the state of MSDWC review 2021. So, that's all I have.
All right, thank you for it. Curriculum and Instruction Report, Mr. Gray.
I want to go ahead and allot my time to Mr. Kuhn and Dr. Kuhn, Mr. Key favorite, right?
Okay.
I mean, I didn't do it, it's your.
All right, we'll skip down to new business then. Recommendation to approve the 2022 Budget Reduction Resolution from the seventeen eighty-two notes.
Yeah, so I gave you in the board packet, the seventeen eighty-two notes that we actually received from the DLGF. There were just one reduction and appropriation, and that was in the rain day fund. And so, my recommend date, we have to approve the 2022 budget based off the seventeen eighty-two notes, which means we have to reduce the rainy day 132,000 to make it match seventeen eighty-two notice from what we submitted.
So.
Motion and second to approve the 2022 Budget Reduction Resolution for seventeen eighty-two notice. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Recommendation to approve the Local Income Tax Distribution Resolution.
So, every month, we get a local income tax distribution from the state, from the county auditor. We have typically put that into our tax distributed funds, which would be the operation and debt service fund, just to offset any of those tax rates. And then we just divide that up by the tax rate for that calendar year and determine how much of that would go into the operation fund, how much of that will go into the debt service fund. So, total, it's usually about nineteen thousand, well, at least this year, it's going to be about $19,000 a month. And so, the recommendation is to continue the practice of putting it into the debt service and operation funds, broken down by the tax rate percentage of those of those funds.
So, move. Second.
Motion and second to approve the recommendation of the Local Income Tax Distribution Resolution, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Recommendation to approve the dispersals from education fund to operations fund now.
So, every year, we have to determine how much money we're going to allow to be transferred from education operation fund. So, I try to budget out how much that would be over the course of the year, which is about 2.2 million dollars to keep us under that fifteenth percent. So, that would equate to about $185,000 a month. Right now, we've only been doing $160,000 a month, and I will probably start this year at $165,000 a month. But it is not to exceed $185,000 a month without future board approval.
So. Motion and second to approve the recommendation for the dispersals from education fund to operations fund, all in favor, say aye. Recommendation to approve the resolution authorizing the treasurer to pay, pay claims.
We typically do this in the board, first board meeting in January. Just in the case that we don't have a board meeting on a regular scheduled time, we are still allowed to make the necessary payments to claims and so forth, which would then get approved at the proceeding process.
So, move. Second.
Motion, yeah, motion and second to approve the recommendation for the resolution authorizing the treasurer to pay claims, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Recommendation to approve the update to reentry plan and supplement 2021, 2022.
So, for next year, when we have the state of MSDWC review of 2022, we'll start out with, if you approve this tonight, another change or update to our reentry plan. And so, my recommendation is, as per what is listed in your board packet, the quarantine timelines that would change. And so, this is a supplement, or this is an update to our reentry plan and supplement.
I move to approve the reentry plan.
Sure. Motion and second, before we vote, I want to just kind of go over this for people who are watching on Facebook that may not necessarily caught what we're about to vote on. I'll explain it in my best understanding, and if there are things that you want to change, feel free to do that, Mr. Key favorite. Currently, our quarantine policy is that if a student or staff member tests positive, they're quarantined for 10 days. This will allow us to allow them to return after five days, but starting day six, if they're asymptomatic or their symptoms are resolving, they can return on day six, as long as they wear a mask for the remaining five days of that original tag. That gets them back into school quicker. Also, fever-free for 24 hours without medication. Extracurriculars may resume after the fifth day, as long as sixth day, wear a mask at all times, except for when actively performing or actively playing during that extracurricular activity. So, that does give us the option of coming back on day six instead of making you wait 10 days. The other part of this is the close contacts to a positive household member, that if you are a close contact to somebody that's tested positive, you may also return on day six after only a five-day quarantine, as long as you are willing to wear that mask for days five through 10. Again, extracurriculars would be similar to wear a mask on day six, except for when you're actively performing or actively playing in that, that extracurricular activity. So, we are making this, I guess the CDC has changed that, apparently the science has changed. So, based on CDC recommendations, we are doing this in an attempt to get students back into the classroom and staff members back into the classroom quickly, more quickly. So, you have, again, tell me who, I forget, I didn't write that down. Scott, and the second was?
Christian.
Christian, okay. So, we have a recommendation to approve that update to the reentry plan and supplement, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's what it is. We have no unfinished business, no board policy in the items from public comment. Should we say it's a?
Yep.
Bounce off the satellites.
Sure.
Okay. The items from board members. All right, we're during.